Thank you. Good morning. Welcome to the Ordinary Council meeting for the 24th of August 2023. And we start this meeting at nine o'clock. For attendance that commenced, I'll just acknowledge that Ben Poll, General Manager for Cced is filling in. Our CEO will be here in a few moments. And attends, I see all councillors in attendance. Good morning to you all. I now hand over to councillor Kunzaman to do the acknowledgement of country.
Thank you, Chair. Ipswich City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we are gathered, acknowledging our gratitude that we share this land today, but also acknowledging the cost of that sharing and our hope that we can move to a place of justice and partnership together, and we welcome the opportunities for future engagement.
Thank you very much, councillor Kunzaman. We'll now move on to an opening prayer. We're very fortunate this morning to have Pastor Pierre Francini from the Central Valley Church in Ripley to come forward. So I ask you, pastor, to come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Please, do you mind saying your name and the church you're from?
Yeah, Pierre Francini. We are from Central Valley Church, so we planted a church in the Ripley community about just over four years ago. And we've just seen it grow as the community has grown. And so we just meet there in the high school there in the Ripley Valley State Secondary College. Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you.
It's been a joy. Yeah. Thank you for this opportunity. Let me open our time together in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father and Holy God, we praise you for a world and universe that sings of beauty and truth, that plays the sweet melody of goodness and meaning, purpose and joy. We praise you that you made us with inherent worth and dignity, creatures worth loving and sacrificing for. And yet we acknowledge the crooked line, that though we have a great capacity for good and wonder, we also have the capacity for great harm and hurt, for injustice and greed, for abuse and violence. And so I pray, Father, that you would give these councilwomen and men wisdom, wisdom that can navigate the complexity of life while upholding the good, a light in darkness of sorts. Would you temper their hearts with both justice and mercy, conviction and character, truth and love, compassion and kindness, courage and humility, fairness and forgiveness, so that they may carry out their roles with that sweet melody playing in their actions? And dear God, whether they acknowledge you or not this morning, I praise and thank you for these men and women who, in a sense, live their lives in the service and sacrifice of others, like me, our communities and our nation. And though they aren't often acknowledged for all that they do, they still serve, and so I thank you for them, Father. And lastly, I pray and ask that you would encourage them and bless the work of their hands, allowing them to taste and see the good. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your very kind blessing. Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Apologies and leave of absence. I have none. I'm not sure councillor Owen, did you wish to give a leave of absence for a future meeting? Okay, next time. Thank you very much. Item five, condolences. There are nil. Item six, tributes, there are nil. Item seven, presentation of petitions, there are none. Item eight, presentations and deputations, there are none. Nine, public participation. There is none. Item ten, which is a matter of public interest, and I have a matter of public interest regarding the Ipswich Tribune's breach of Australian Press Council general principles one, two and three. The truth matters. There is a famous quote from Winston Churchill on the truth. The truth is incontrovertible. Panic may resent it, ignorance may deride it, and malice may distort it, but there it is. Journalists play a very important role in communicating the decisions and actions of our council to our community. And of course, there's an expectation from the community that what we read in our local papers is the truth. However, recently, the Australian Press Council has found that the Ipswich Tribune has made a number of accusations about me and done so without factual basis. The Australian Press Council is the national peak body tasked with upholding the principles of free speech and responsible journalism. It also sets standards and responds to complaints about material in Australian newspapers and magazines, as well as a growing number of online-only publications. The Ipswich Tribune is a current member of the Australian Press Council, so this is a significant finding made by its own professional body. As most in this room would know, I have a pretty thick skin and it's part and parcel of being a mayor or a councillor. However, I draw the line at a local paper using its trusted position in the community to make false accusations against me or council. In particular, the Ipswich Tribune unfairly and misleadingly accused me of political interference, questionable conduct, and of acting inappropriately in relation to the renaming of the Paul Pasali Bridge and Pasali Drive. Unsurprisingly, the Office of the Independent Assessor, the state authority that assesses complaints against councillors, swiftly cleared me of any wrongdoing. And now the National Peak Body for Print Media has supported this finding and found that the Ipswich Tribune has failed to take reasonable steps to comply with their general principles one, two and three. And I will list those principles. Principle one, ensuring that factual material in news reports and elsewhere is accurate and not misleading and is distinguishable from other materials such as opinion. Principle two, providing a correction or other adequate remedial action if published material is significantly inaccurate or misleading. And principle three, ensuring that factual material is presented with reasonable fairness and balance and that writers' expressions of opinion are not based on significantly inaccurate factual material or omission of key facts. The Press Council ruled that the Ipswich Tribune had failed to take reasonable steps to comply with their general principles one, two and three. Disappointingly, the Ipswich Tribune has published many articles and social media posts also referencing this unfair and misleading commentary with false accusations. While I have approached the publisher to rectify or remove these articles, they have refused to do so. I note that the Ipswich Tribune wrote to council CEO and councillors yesterday in an attempt to stop this matter from being raised publicly today. After the many, many stories written on this matter by the Ipswich Tribune, they continue to try to hold back the truth from our community. However, I strongly believe the Ipswich community being able to trust that their mayor and that their council is open, transparent and honest, and that's incredibly important for our city. In fact, under the Code of Conduct for Queensland councillors, I have a legal obligation too, and I quote from the code here. At all times, strive to maintain and strengthen the public's trust, confidence in the integrity of council and avoid any action which may diminish its standing, authority or dignity. I pride myself on being open, transparent and leading council with honesty and integrity. I know this makes me a target for some in our community who were very comfortable with the old ways of doing business, but I will not take a backward step in doing the right thing for our community. This is certainly a timely reminder for residents to be critical and selective about where they get their news and consider whether they are reading fact or fiction. Therefore, I raise this matter of public interest today to provide the truth on this important matter for both council and the Ipswich community. And now move on to the next item, which is declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. And are there any declarations of interest on the agenda?
Thanks, Mayor. In accordance with section 150EQ of the Local Government Act, I councillor Andrew Fegner informed the meeting that I have declarable conflict of interest in item 15.6, titled Report of Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest are my business interests in both Bar Heisenberg Proprietary Limited and A1A Events Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town in Ipswich. I plan on dealing with this conflict by leaving the room while the matter is discussed and voted on. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fegner. Are there any other declarable declarations? Thank you, councillor Madsen.
In accordance with section 150EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Jacob Madsen informed the meeting that I have declarable conflict of interest in item 15.6, titled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is on the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labor Day Committee, and our building, the Ipswich Trades Hall, is immediately adjacent to council CBD redevelopment. As a result of my conflict of interest, I'll leave the meeting room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much, councillor Madsen. Are there any other declarations? Thank you, councillor Johnick.
In accordance with section 150EM of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Nicole Johnick informed the meeting that I have a prescribed conflict of interest in item 15.1, the minutes of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee. Title. Item two, development application 11235-2022-MAOC. Recommendation, Remondus Australia Proprietary Limited, Change Application for Compost Manufacturing Enclosed at Swan Bank. The nature of the prescribed conflict of interest is I have two brothers that are employed with the applicant and I will leave the meeting.
Thank you very much, councillor Johnick.
Could I just clarify a point of order in relation to that declaration? That decision's already been made, I believe, under delegation, so we're not deciding that today.
Yep. No, thank you. I was going to ask, because that was under delegation, where councillor Johnick did declare a conflict of interest and didn't participate or vote on that matter. And this is just a matter of the, I guess, the minutes and the other matters are not under delegation. I'll just confirm with you.
Yeah, the matter's already been decided.
Yep. So based on that, councillor Johnick, do you wish to withdraw your conflict of interest and stay in? But thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other declarations? Thank you very much. Move on to item 11, 11.1, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary meeting. Does anyone have any questions for council officers? I'll move that. Do I have a seconder? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any errors, omissions, corrections people would like to put forward? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. They keep it unanimous and carried. Item 12 is a mayoral minute. There is none. We're now going to item 13, the business outstanding matters lying on the tables we're dealt with. There are none. So we now move on. Sorry, 14, sorry. I can see there's a... That's business outstanding. Let me just check. 14. And then now we go on to reception and consideration of committee reports. Item 15.1 is the report of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee of the 10th of August. I move that council adopt the report of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee of the 10th of August. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Tully. I'll open up any discussion. No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. I'll now move on to item 15.2, which is the report of the Governance and Transparency Committee. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how he'd like that report managed. Councillor Madsen.
Mayor, I wasn't present at that meeting. As such, I have no comment to make on it and will not be moving the recommendations.
I'll go to the deputy mayor, I think, who's the deputy of that particular committee. Would you like to... How would you like that managed?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I'd like to move that councillor adopt the report of the Governance Transparency Committee, meeting number seven on 10th of August.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion on the matter? Thank you, councillor Tully.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to speak briefly in relation to item two, which is the relates to the Flood Recovery Resilient Homes Fund and the voluntary buyback, particularly in Ipswich. And I think we can all say that the amount of funding provided by the Commonwealth and the state has been quite extraordinary in terms of the numbers of properties that are being bought back for the community, you know, in respect of future floods. I do detect in the community, and this happened after 1974, a feeling that it won't happen again. Engineers will say that there's no doubt that it will happen again at some stage, despite the best management of the dams, the Wymanhoe and Somerset Dams. But I need to say this, and I've intimated this previously. I think the success of this programme is evident, but it's not a complete success because a lot of people, because of their social contacts or their longevity at a particular address, don't want to sell or they're concerned that they'd have to move away from loved ones and friends. I would urge the Commonwealth and state governments to look at the continuation of this programme, obviously on a smaller level, so that we can progressively acquire properties in the flood zone in Ipswich and, of course, the other council areas in Queensland. And we'd have to strike the right balance because similar programmes operate interstate. So I would think that we, you know, as this actual programme now starts to wind down, there are other aspects to it, the raising of the homes and the flood resilient materials that some people see as an alternative. I would like to see the basic concept of this programme continue so that the opportunities arise, you know. I know in Goodna alone, these elderly people have been there for many years. They won't be there forever. That might be opportunities for some of these properties to be acquired in the future at a much lower level, as I said. It's a strange sort of situation. Mayor, you were there recently. There's one house along Enid Street. You've got all the properties that have been acquired. They're back on the Woogaroo Creek, one of the lowest areas in Goodna. And it's one property which is holding up. Now, I don't say that in a negative way to the owners who have the right, you know, not to join in the acquisition, but it's holding up the development of good parkland that could be, which is adjacent to and could become part of an extended Kippon Park at Goodna and other parts of the city where the same issues arise. So I would just hope that with our council and others, perhaps, the Commonwealth and state could look at a modified programme in years to come.
Thank you, councillor Tully. When this did come to committee, I also spoke and praised the state and the federal governments. It's been, I think, a transformational initiative by those two levels of government. And I note that the day before the flood, on the 24th of February last year, we brought down our Ipswich Integrated Catchment Plan. For the first time, we talked about, you know, having voluntary buybacks on how we manage this. So I concur with your sentiment.
Mayor, just if I may, through you, a question for councillor Tully. Is this something that's come up at the LGAQ policy executive for potentially a motion at the conference this year?
Now, well, there's 180 motions coming up to the conference in Gladstone, 30 of which apparently can be combined because they're very similar to motions from other councils. So there's at least 150 plus to be debated. I'm on a committee which is meeting in the first week of September to review all of those. I haven't seen those motions yet. I'm not aware of that. It is very difficult to get a late motion up unless it's urgent, but that's an opportunity that I'll look at because as this winds down, we need to be on top of that to try to get that commitment from the state and the federal government. We've got state and federal elections looming, and I think most reasonable people would think that that's an outcome. Because you'd have to say this programme's been very successful, so why not continue the success?
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Mayor, through yourself, if I may, just to address the point at the beginning of what councillor Tully mentioned, is the success of the voluntary home buyback scheme here in Queensland. When viewing in the way things have been undertaken in another jurisdiction, whilst I was in Sydney for Sustainability in Government Conference, it was quite openly discussed the current situation further south, particularly the town of Lismore, and the current state of those who are still suffering from that immense flooding damage. So comparatively, I would agree with councillor Tully in that the Queensland Government, supported by the Commonwealth, has, here in Queensland, undertaken a very worthy programme to assist the citizens of the state to recover from those damaging floods and that comparatively, we're doing pretty well. Nothing that is human-designed is perfect, I would suggest, but comparatively, we're doing pretty good here in Queensland.
Thank you. There's nothing? I'll put the recommendation to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. And now move on to item 15.3, which is the report of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee of the 10th of August 2023. And I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how he'd like this recommendation managed.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that we accept the recommendations for items number one through four, with the exclusion of five. I just need to make an amendment there.
Okay. Thank you very much. So you've moved items one through to four? Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Kunzaman. Any discussion on items one through to four? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Item five.
We've just got a small amendment here in that one of the amounts allocated in funding was incorrect. The total funds allocated to Queensland Council of Unions Ipswich Labor Day event within the civic and ceremonial events funding line was listed as $10,000 instead of $9,623. So I move to just amend that amount to $9,623.
Thank you. And do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Kunzaman. Move on to any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Thanks. And now move on to item 15.4, which is the report of Economic and Industry Development Committee of the 10th of August 2023. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how she would like that report managed.
Thank you. I move that council adopt the report of the Economic and Industry Development Committee, number seven of 2023, of 10th of August 2023.
Do I have a seconder? Thank you, councillor Fegner. Any discussion? Thank you, councillor Kunzaman.
Thank you. I draw attention to the report of key economic data. Noting the increase in population, we have to match that growth to the continued expansion of infrastructure and services, but also to use all of our powers in the encouragement of the creation of diverse jobs in our area that will improve the metric that demonstrates that residents can not only live in our great city, but can work where they live.
Thank you, councillor Kunzaman. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I'll move on to item 15.5, which is the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee of the 10th of August 2023. And I hand over to the chair of that committee to see how he'd like this report managed.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that council adopt the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee, meeting number seven of the 10th of August.
Thank you very much. Do I have a seconder? Thank you, councillor Fegner. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. I'd just like to point out one item that was business outstanding that was dealt with has been, was initially raised back in 18th of November 2021 at council ordinary meeting by councillor Tully with regards to update on discussions with Queensland Department of Environment and Science regarding national parks in the Ipswich local government area. I'd just like to provide the opportunity if councillor Tully would like to speak to that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I was going to, in reverse, just to ask you sort of where it's heading. I think we've got an earlier report about the pros and cons, which were properly identified on both sides in having a national park within the city of Ipswich boundaries, the extreme boundaries, and the area west of Granchester was identified. So could I... I think it's important for the city that we do have a national park. Many of the larger councils do. Could I just get an update of where it's heading and what you think the ultimate outcome might be?
Yes, Mayor. I can speak to that, to answer councillor Tully, but I'll just check with him if he would prefer technical officers detail on that, as to which you prefer.
Well, maybe a one-minute update and we'll see how that goes.
Sure. My understanding is that the discussions with regards to the area of interest initially raised, White Rock Spring Mountain area, the state discussed that they didn't have capacity to take on any further tracks of capacity to take on any further tracts of land of that nature. And that it is this council's view that the protections and the environmental matters there would be best managed by retaining ownership by council and continued maintenance and protection via EnviroPlan funding, that outstanding fund that we have to protect our natural environment here within the LGA. And then moving forward, the discussions with regards to possibility in the western sector, around the Little Liverpool Range area, that discussions would possibly ensue with the, our neighbouring local governments, because there's four that would be involved, ourselves, Scenic Rim, Lockyer Valley and Somerset Regional Councils, who all border that tract of land there. And that would then provide another large parcel of protected area, which then also follows through with our intent to acquire properties to the south of the LGA to provide that connecting corridor system between that area, Flinders Gulman, and then White Rock Spring Mountain. I think I have that correct. If I get a bit of a half-nod. If you want further detail, though, I'm sure an officer would be prepared to come forward to explain.
If I may, as well, while we're discussing the matter through you, Mayor, and to my Chair, I guess the overall intention of you bringing this to council, councillor Tully, was to kind of embark on an advocacy piece to try and ensure that we do have a national park within the Ipswich local government area. In short, after discussions with the department, the conclusion was that Queensland Parks and Wildlife Services have advised there are no current plans or intentions to establish a new national park within the Ipswich local government area, which is kind of putting that advocacy to bed. I mean, there were further, I guess, discussions and points made around working together with the local government area, but it was quite definitive in that they weren't investigating and they had no intentions of establishing a national park. So that's kind of the point. That was the conclusion that we got to.
Yeah, thank you. And I think you're becoming officer material with your excellent summary of the situation. I think that's still a serious alternative if you're talking about four councils that could benefit from a national park. And I know the area that I'd originally identified, you know, in the southern sector of the city had a lot going for it, but I accept that there are limitations if the state was operating it, controlling it, which don't exist when we've got the flexibility to manage an area which is popular with and extensively used by the public. But I don't think we should give up on this. I think the opportunity of four councils to, you know, we're not asking for a lot in relation to that Little Liverpool Range area. And I think we should progress that in more detail. Some of these things take years to come to fruition, and I think it's important that we keep that in mind so that we can proudly say that we have a national park within the city of Ipswich.
Mayor, if I may, we call forward appropriate officer to give definitive detail on any future discussions that may be had.
May I just confer with the CEO on something?
Sorry?
I'm just wondering whether this is really about the confirmation of the minutes of the meeting. Is it more appropriate to bring this forward in another way for discussion? Given there is, it sounds as if it's a discussion in relation to a future initiative? Procedurely, councillor Tully?
When I was speaking, I was just talking about the, and I think the others were talking about the overall situation over the last couple of years that we've looked at this. I was just preempting an opportunity to continue our
Sounds like new business.
Support, you know, with the government. I'm not suggesting that we make a decision today, but we need to, in my view, have a plan in moving forward, if that's the appropriate way to proceed.
And councillor Tyler, just could you also not mention locations as well in your discussion?
Yeah, I mentioned Granchester, but then someone else mentioned a particular, specific area. So I think it's an opportunity to just proceed and perhaps we could seek a further report in relation to what opportunities there are for a national park. Notwithstanding what we've been told by the state, the opportunities are there to continue with our support.
Thank you. So councillor, there'll be a matter of new matter which you obviously can raise. We can raise, at the moment, we're discussing the minutes of this report. So if you wish to raise another
Point of order, Mayor.
Member. Excuse me, I'm still talking. So if you want to raise it as a new matter or a notice as a motion, then you can. At the moment, we're looking at the minutes here as well. So it's a record of the report coming back from the Queensland Government National Parks. So I think councillor Mason had a
Mayor, I raise a point of order because I actually think that that's incorrect. We're yet to actually ratify the report of the Environment and Sustainability Committee. And in this discussion, that could actually lead to that item one being selected to be taken out and additional motions to be attached to it. So I don't agree with the ruling that it's not, that we're just discussing the minutes. We're actually discussing the adoption of the reports from that committee. So I just had to offer that point of clarification. I'm not particularly wedded either way as to how the council proceeds. Just had to share my understanding.
Thank you very much, councillor Mason. So I think, CEO, you
So Chair, would you like to call an officer forward then?
Oh, yes. Would you like to speak to a local council officer, councillor Tully?
No, I think we have enough information today. I was just talking in a broad sort of area. And I'm not in a position to formulate a specific motion today, but I take the advice that we can move on from here and still adopt the recommendations as printed today, and then look to furthering this matter at a future date.
Thank you very much, councillor Tully. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mayor, just following on from that, I'm quite sure the department would be happy to arrange a future workshop or briefing on the matter. And any developments from there could be brought forward to committee?
Thank you. With that, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please.
Mayor, there was just one item in the, on the agenda
Oh, sorry.
That I discussed.
You wish to speak to other matters on the agenda?
No, we're even near the morning to you. There was two other items from that committee meeting, which was the environmental education update and summary, which gained quite a bit of discussion during the committee, and also the item on experience nature forty ways in forty days, which was the inaugural, first time that that was rolled out very successfully right across the city. And if, I'd encourage any member of council if they wish to ask any questions with regards to those items.
Any questions? No. Happy to move to the vote. Thank you. I'll move to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Okay. We'll now move on to item 15.6, which is the report of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee of the 10th of August 2023. I hand it to the Chair of that committee to see how she would like that report managed.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the minutes of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee held on the 13th of July 2023 be confirmed.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. Deputy Mayor, thank you. Any discussion? No more discussion. Just great. The activation going very well and continuing to go well. Put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room and carried. Thank you. Thank you. We now move on to item 16.1, which is the CEO Organisation Performance Report for July 2023, and I'll move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Fekner. Thank you. In discussion, I just look at the significant matters that are in this report, especially in particular, the first one here being the independent financial level of the QAO, and that council has recorded its strongest result in almost a decade following independent assessment by the QAO as part of its Local Government 2022 report tabled in Parliament. And the assessments were made by the QAO on the financial governance and internal controls as effective, partial effective or ineffective. And so I commend you, CEO, and the organisation, the many years of work that standard administration in getting this work done. I also note too, appreciate the new graphs in the workplace health and safety to show the, how, I know we have a focus in council on safety and workplace health and safety, but to see that we're well below the state average as well. I also note the number of matters that are up for community consultation. There's a list of them there. And noting that on Shapewa Ipswich, there will be new community engagement projects, such as one I think that starts tomorrow night, I think, the Nature Based Solutions, or tonight, so Nature Based Solutions for Flood Resilience. It's a collaboration with Australian National University Research Project. We're seeking feedback from residents on limestone park upgrades, as well as the Southern Resource Recovery Centre and Animal Management Facility as well. And I also commend the organisation on the number of grant applications that are in there at the moment as well, to secure funding from the state and the federal governments. Is there any other discussion? Questions? No. Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to item 16.2, the monthly financial performance report for July 2023. And I'll move that the report on council's financial performance for the period ending the 31 July 2023 be considered and noted by council. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item 17, notice as a motion. There are two notices of motion today. And the first one is from myself, and that is a notice of motion that council explore how it can support community lapping events in Ipswich Central in consultation with businesses, stakeholders and Queensland Police Service. Do I have a second for that, councillor Doyle? Thank you. In speaking to this, we are seeing a resurgence in the Tomon tradition of lapping, something that my husband used to do back in the 90s. Heading out to Ipswich Central to show off your pride and joy while catching up with like-minded mates has been part of the fabric of this city for decades. There are a number of reasons for Ipswich's unique car culture, but the major one being it's a bit of good old fashioned fun where car owners can come together for free and express their individuality. There have been more and more of these types of events happening organically, which is what makes these events so unique and dear to the community. These are organised on social media, usually by a car club or interested people, and have grown in popularity each time. There are also many organised events, such as council's own park and pose, giving the community an opportunity to get up close to some of Ipswich's spectacular classic and muscle cars, as well as doing planes, trains and autos. Thousands of people are attending these events, so I think it's timely for council to consider the impact these types of events are having on local traders, police and other stakeholders. And equally, what social and economic impacts and benefits they also bring to the community. I've had some traders in Ipswich Central tell me they are very happy with the additional business. I've also had others tell me that they are finding this to be a nuisance. We also received verbal advice from Queensland Police in regarding public liability obligations. So this notice of motion, I'm just seeking for council to bring all stakeholders together, to gather the facts and to begin a conversation around these events. I'll open up for any other discussion. No other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item 17.2, which is a notice of motion from councillor Johnick on car parking regulations for Springfield Central Community Centre at 134 Parkland Drive, Springfield Central. I'll hand over to yourself. If you wish to move that, councillor Johnick?
Thank you, Chair.
And do we have a second? Thank you, councillor Tully. Yes, councillor Johnny?
Amend the recommendation A, by deleting the words investigate the amendment of and inserting commence the process to amend.
I'll accept that, Bea.
Okay, so just make that's up there.
So
I'll just wait for it to be up there, silly. Thank you. Councillor, if you should speak to it?
Yeah, just for way of background, under the agreement with the Y at the Springfield Central Community Centre, there are 16 car spaces from approximately 65 that are dedicated to the occupants' use and their residents visiting. But residents are experiencing difficulty finding car spaces. And a particular concern is the new mums and mums-to-be that have appointments with Queensland Health nurses that work out at their community centre. A number of options have been explored to try and manage the issue of car spaces. And I know that the Y has worked really closely with the neighbouring schools. Their relationships are strong, but understandably, there's not enough resources for someone to like man the car parks and make sure that these new mums or mums-to-be have got somewhere to park. So they usually park on the other side of the sporting fields. And there's also senior veterans that do use the facility as well. So under this motion, and looking at adding map P to the subordinate local laws, will allow for some regulation to occur so that, you know, we can ease some of that burden for the residents that are trying to find a space that's close to the facility.
Thank you. Councillor Tyler has a second?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. And I certainly support this. This land is owned by council. And even though there are signs there, they're not enforceable, parking signs, this motion would enable this area to become a, an off-street regulated parking area. The signage, which would then go in, would be able to regulate the days of operation, the hours of operation, parts that may become loading zones or general use. I'm told that a lot of the cars that park there adjacent to the school have a P-plates on them. And it's technically quite legal for people to do that irrespective of the signage that's on private property rather than a public road. If it was a public road, under council's control, we could put up this relevant signage. Because it's not, we have to go through this process to get it under the subordinate local law. And it's a good example of where we're trying to get an outcome that's of benefit to the YMCA and the people legitimately going to that organisation rather than people hogging those spaces day in and day out, mainly Monday to Friday. I don't think there'll be any need under paragraph B if this is approved and agreed to by the state government to identify anything beyond Monday to Friday. And then we'll have the later opportunity of recommending what particular signage should go there in accordance with this proposal.
Thank you, councillor Doyle.
I just want to clarify, Chair, if we've received, if the mover's received any advice from council officers, I just note that the motion is commencing the process, and then the second part is implementing. We've done some background. We know that from a legal perspective, we are able to do this, implement this.
Yes, so we have spoken with our traffic department and also our compliance department quite, yeah, quite heavily here. And so they're in agreement. And it's a good outcome.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I agree. It's a great outcome. My only issue was that there's no, I guess, advice being given to full council.
being given to full council on this proposal and whether or not it's within.
Yeah. I must admit, with the original wording, investigate, I was very comfortable with, but this is now a decision that we're going to commence. Can I ask for the relevant council officer to come? Just so I understand what commence the amendment means and what engagement, just from a good governance perspective, what should be happening?
Good morning. Brett Davy, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services.
Yep. Can you explain to me with that recommendation saying that council commenced the process? Can you explain what that process is? And does it involve community consultation?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. The process, if it is a full local law review, does involve community consultation. There may be opportunities through the Local Government Act to do interim local law changes, which may not require the process of a community engagement process. So what we can do as a result of this resolution is work with our legal services area to determine the right path to achieve that outcome. And that would be essentially commencing the process. Now, if there is a insurmountable issue through that process, we can, of course, bring a report back to council and outline what those issues are and seek a resolution.
Okay.
Chair, if I may, just a quick question to Mr Davy. On the face of it, are you able to confirm that this is something council officers would recommend?
Yes, it's one of the solutions we've recommended to solve the concern.
Thank you.
What were some of the other solutions that you recommended?
So we could either change the local law as described. There are examples which have not been well received in the community where private organisations have employed private parking enforcers, so to speak, to take action. Yeah, so that was a solution that we did not think was worthy of pursuing for a local government organisation. But they're the two primary ones. Obviously, there's soft measures that you can apply as well in terms of additional signage. And I believe some notes on wind screens and that sort of thing, but that may have been undertaken already by the YMCA in attempting to resolve the issue.
Yes, there has been, there has been a little bit of, I guess, abuse in the car park as well in relation to trying to manage this, which is unfortunate. And it has been going on for quite some time. So this is going to alleviate that issue.
And the final possible solution is physical measures in terms of boom gates, bollards and some short-term restrictions on car parking. Administically a burden and potentially not practical in this example, looking at the layout of the car park.
Yeah. Has there been an approach to the school at all? Because it sounds like it's mainly the school students that are parking there.
By the YMCA, I'm unfamiliar if our officers have been in touch with the school. I'm sorry.
The school actually works really closely with the centre. And then they do everything that they can. Understandably, resources and staffing are short as well. So if you can spare it, teach it, and man a car park, you know, it's just not practical.
Okay. Any other question, Mr Davy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the matter? Councillor Johnny, do you wish to wrap it up before we go to the vote?
No, I think the discussion's been thorough. Thank you, Chair.
No, thank you very much. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Questions on notice, I've got here before me, CEO. I think there was some questions on notice at the tenth of August CCAS committee about, oh, so we should table those. So there was a question regards to an interested council duty officer must be contacted. I guess there was a question, I think councillor Allen, you had raised. At the tenth of August, at the last CCAS committee, there was a question relating to how after-hours calls are treated if they are potential threat to public safety?
I've had a response from the department.
You've had a response? Okay, so you're happy with that? Okay. Thank you. The other one was there about the acknowledgement of council support for the two thousand twenty-three Ipswich Labour Day event. And the organising body have advised council that they included council's support in their speech on the day and that they weren't able to include council's logo on the event flyer due to the, I guess, the timing of the funding and so on. I don't have any other questions on notice?
Ma'am, just through you, a question to the CEO about how we deal with questions on notice.
Yes.
Previously, it's come to the next committee meeting for advice back on top of an email too.
I might check with our
Timing if the answers come back and there's an ordinary in between that those answers are provided at the next
My apologies.
No, that's okay. I'll check with our committee administration manager, but it was my understanding that they are attached to the minutes of the meeting. So hence, having been emailed, the intention would be that they'd now be attached as part of the formal record of the minutes.
I guess it's probably a matter of timing because we got these at seven thirty this morning.
Of the minutes of this meeting?
Yes.
They would be attached to the minutes of this meeting? Well, by, I mean, by virtue of you having introduced them as subject matter this morning, yes, they would. But ordinarily, when we deal with these things, sorry, the question is, if the questions are on notice from a particular committee, would they come to the next?
Okay. Well, I'm happy to withdraw.
Not necessarily, just to the next full meeting where available.
Vicky, am I correct or incorrect?
Well, normally they would be attached. That response would be on the next CCAS committee.
Okay. Well, how about I withdraw?
Yeah, I'm incorrect. Sorry.
I'll withdraw those two questions on notice and refer them to the CCAS, the committee. Thank you very much, councillor Fekner.
Thanks, ma'am.
In that case, I'll call the meeting closed at nine fifty-two. Thank you very much, everyone.